Happy St. Patrick's Day and welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. Today is March 17, 2025. This meeting is called to order. This evening's invocation is by Pastor John Wakefield of Church of the Epiphany. And welcome to South Haven.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for the invitation to be here tonight. On behalf of the people of the Episcopal Church of the Epiphany, thank you for your service to this community. Let us pray. Almighty God and Creator of all things, we gather here tonight and give you thanks for the opportunity to be together. We thank you, God, for the civil servants here tonight, elected to represent all of us, and for their tireless work on our behalf. And we thank you for the freedom we have together, the freedom to present differing opinions, and the responsibility we have to work together, not just for profit or for our own personal tastes and benefit, but for the good of all people, residents, tourists, immigrants, visitors, newcomers, children, retirees, transplants like me, and lifelong Michiganders alike. Almighty God, we thank you for the beautiful sunshine. We thank you for the winter that gives us time and space for reflection. We thank you for the witness of St. Patrick and this season of Lent. And we thank you for the coming spring when you make all things new. Tonight, oh Lord, we pray that you help us to keep your commandment to love our neighbor at the forefront of our minds. We know that Jesus said the two most important commandments are to love you and to love our neighbor. And all of us try to do our best on these in our own ways. But Jesus also told us to love our enemies, and that is just so hard these days. We pray that tonight you help us to see the image of God in everyone, to see the goodness in every single person, and to see it most especially in those different from us and in those with whom we disagree. Finally, tonight, Lord, I also pray specifically for the oppressed, for those who suffer needlessly because of systems that we ourselves create. Help us all to see the image of God in those we have hurt in the past and in those we continue to hurt today. Help us to learn to humbly repent and to show them abundant love and mercy. Tonight, I pray for our LGBTQ neighbors and friends who may feel threatened, misunderstood, alone, hated, or judged. We know that you alone are our judge. I pray for our Latino neighbors and friends who may feel afraid, unwelcome, despised, or concerned for their safety and the safety of their families. And I pray for all those who are made to feel less than because of heated political rhetoric and decisions made in rooms like these across our nation by people like us. Those who are made to feel like they are unworthy of love and protection from their community. God, I thank you for this city, for these people, and for the beautiful creation and opportunity that surrounds us here on the shores of Lake Michigan. Guide us tonight toward making South Haven a better place for all people. Guide us toward love. It is in your holy name that we pray these things. Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Megan, could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reeser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Latisha Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Yes, here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. It's now time for community update. Do we have anything, Kate?
Gail was unfortunately detained today, so she will not be with us tonight.
Thank you. It's now time for public comment for items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for public hearing. And you have up to three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Jack Fitzher, 24 and a half Grand Boulevard. I was unable to make the public hearing last week. Week before last, we were out of town. But I wanted to get my two cents in, as I typically do. I'm a strong proponent for control of the short-term rental ordinances. I think the stronger the ordinance is, the better off the community as a whole. We've been fed a lot of stuff over the years from specifically that industry, much of which is really incorrect in a lot of ways. One thing that sticks out, though, is how short-term rentals benefit the property values of our community. Probably, it's the opposite. Over the years, real estate values are tied dramatically to large macroeconomic events, inflation, interest rates, recessions, not a small industry like the SDR industry is. I look at the advent of this industry, and that's what it is, it's a commercial business. You look at this industry's growth, and there's a direct relationship between it and the loss of the population of our lovely town here. And if you tie in those 20 years that it's been in existence and the last 20 years of our growth, you can clearly see that there's a relationship between the two. I just feel like the more we can do, the better off we are. I feel that there was a statement made recently about how there hasn't been any issues of safety in any of these places. You don't live where I live.
Do you have one minute?
You didn't see the eight-foot fire on a wooden deck being produced by a group of renters who didn't know that they shouldn't have a wooden fire on a wooden deck. Thankfully, that was put out before the fire department had to come. You haven't seen any number of problems that occur when they make statements like that concerning the safety in numbers. I think the fewer people per building, the better off we are. The more control of the rental business, and that's what it is, a business entirely, the better off we are as a city. Hopefully, we'll begin to grow a little more. It's getting lonely out there, you know?
John Lawrence for 23 Delaware. Wealth, Community, and Council, it's been a long time coming. People have been working on this, I know, for quite a while to try to strike a balance. And I think that tonight, when you look at it, it's about as good a balance as you're going to get. There are safety concerns that have been addressed. There are concerns about preserving our single-family neighborhoods and also recognizing that people that have a short-term rental will be able to continue that use, you know, under certain conditions. And I think that's about the best you're going to get. The next part of it, of course, will be getting your zoning in place. But I want to thank everybody that's worked on this, and I hope tonight you'll have a positive vote on the ordinance.
Anybody else? If not, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through I?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Discussion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to remove B for the special meeting minutes. I have a very minor but significant amendment.
Okay, B and what else?
Just B.
Okay, we're going to move B to, let's move it to the end of new business, so that'll be F. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A and C through I?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A and C through I.
Support.
All of it, oh, roll call.
Arnold.
Yes.
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
And Brown.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to new business, the City Council will be asked to consider approval of the following special event applications. A, Special Event 2025-12 Icebreaker Festival 2026 to be held from Friday, January 30, 2026, through Sunday, February 1, 2026, throughout various locations in the Downtown and Riverfront Park. B, Special Event 2025-13 South Haven Pride 2025 to be held on Saturday, June 28, 2025, from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. in Stanley Johnson Park. C, Special Event 2025-14 Salute to Veterans 2025 to be held on Saturday, August 16, 2025, at noon in the South Haven Harbor. D, Special Event 2025-15 National Day of Prayer to be held on Thursday, May 1, 2025, from noon to 1:00 p.m. on the South Lawn of City Hall. And E, Special Event 2025-16 Egg Hunt 2025 to be held on Sunday, April 13, 2025, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Kids' Corner. Is there a motion to approve those?
I would move to approve Special Event 2025-12 Icebreaker Festival 2026, as read by the mayor. Special Event 2025-13 South Haven Pride 2025, as read by the mayor. Special Event 2025-14 Salute to Veterans 2025, as read by the mayor. Special Event 2025-15 National Day of Prayer, as read by the mayor. And Special Event 2025-16 Egg Hunt 2025, as read by the mayor.
Is there a second? I'll second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Got a question?
Yeah.
Kate, could you tell us, I don't know if anyone's here to talk on behalf of the events, but the egg hunt, that's a new one. Do you have any background on that?
We have done, the Benton has done an egg hunt before, but previously it was done at South Beach. So they were trying a new venue, maybe less sandy.
Less sandy, okay.
And less windy.
Ah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, and we voted. Okay, we are now at item F from the consent agenda.
Yes, I just have for item five, that said amended to add. And it states in the third line down, Attorney Dave Eberle discussed the best way to calculate maximum occupancy, the end of that sentence. I would strike best and add an S after way so that it would read Attorney Dave Eberle discussed the ways to calculate maximum occupancy. Because, so, do I have a second? That's how I would move to amend it, is strike best and add an S after ways.
I don't hear a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor of making that change? Say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
No.
No. Okay, so that passes four to three. Okay, moving on to 10. The City Council will be asked to consider the following actions regarding a solar project that would directly connect and generate energy to the city's electric distribution system. Kate?
I thank you, Mayor. So in 2023, the city contemplated a purchase power agreement as well as a resolution for a behind-the-meter generation for solar power. Several of these steps were predicated on the solar company, Soul America, getting an application into the PACE program through the EPA, I believe, and a number of other approvals. Here, we have kind of been working this solar project for some time. Dana Byrd is here also to answer any questions. But we do have an updated resolution as well as an updated power purchase interconnect agreement as we've kind of gone down this process. I should also mention that South Haven Township has secured also the zoning approvals for this. Dana?
Yeah, I'm happy to try and answer any questions Council might have. But this first came before you in 2023. And since then, on behalf of the customers of the electric utility, we've been working with Soul America, MPPA, who we work with for power purchase agreements and compliance issues with renewable energy in South Haven Township on the project. Soul America has gotten a conditional loan approval from USDA PACE program. And they are preparing to proceed with the project. So we have to circle back with this power purchase agreement. A couple of the items that were updated in there through the approval process with USDA, they had a little bit different interest rate on their loan that was originally envisioned, as well as USDA worked through different energy generation projections with them. And so there were a couple of terms of the agreement that were modified, but we still think it's a great deal for the customers of the utility. We're recommending approval. This went to the BPU at their special meeting this last month. And so, yeah, we're asking for the Council to consider approving the agreement.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Would you be able to just explain to the residents, kind of in layman's term, how this would benefit them?
Yeah, so we're required to meet certain renewable energy requirements for the power that the customers use on our utility. That's a state-of-Michigan requirement. So that's one way that this will benefit the customers, will help us secure that renewable energy contribution that we have to show the state per state law to comply with that. It also helps us with our capacity and transmission costs. And so when the solar farm is generating electricity where they're so customer on peak days of generation, that helps us set purchase power from the transmission grid at a lower cost because we're generating power behind where we're purchasing it off of the transmission line. So the transmission lines that string across the country, you know, different entities buy energy off of them, and then it's distributed out to different households at the end meter. But for us, when we purchase that power, any power that we generate after that is a benefit to our customers by reducing that overall transmission cost. So in the long run, if we're able to secure sources of renewable energy kind of behind the transmission meter for ourselves, we can pass that along to the customers' overall utility savings.
Mary?
Oh, whoever.
Okay, I just have one more question. So I know when there was the town hall meeting or whatever, there was some public kind of resistance to this for a few reasons. And one of the things that I saw was just our climate in general is not always sunny. So will you tell me if I have this wrong, that I'm picturing like this would especially come in handy in the summer when it is sunnier and usage is higher? Or is it just going to be a benefit?
As I understand, the solar panels generate energy throughout the year. Even on cloudy days, there's a constant generation of some level of electricity that then we would be purchasing and having our customers then use. So on sunnier days, it will generate more energy. But even on cloudy days in the middle of winter, it will still generate energy. And that's where we work with the experts at MPPA and others to kind of model that out. And they work through USDA's program to say, what is a realistic projection of the amount of energy that we're going to utilize so that we can help model the benefit to the system? So it will be generating electricity at all times during the year. It's just when it is sunny, it does generate more.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
Kind of piggybacking off both of Wendy's questions. So I know that there were discussions about different layouts, and I think I saw that the footprint was decreased. Does that correct? So has that addressed some of the concerns that were raised?
Yep, I believe so. As part of the approval through South Haven Township's Planning Commission, Soul America did present alternative design of the project. It was kind of large arrays that would rotate throughout the day. They would be pretty tall. I think the original design was like 11 feet tall or something. And it was a larger footprint. And through their redesign process and working with South Haven Township and the adjacent neighborhoods, they were trying to reduce that footprint as much as they could, lower the profile of the array. And they were able to redesign the site to do those things and still have a good power generation benefit similar to what was originally proposed.
Wonderful. And I think also with regard to the benefit, aren't there some hefty fines if we don't come, you know, don't resource the renewable energy by, what is it, 2030 or something like that? So that's another benefit?
Yes, yep. There's a staggered increase over the next several years where we have to go from 15% all the way up to, is it 60%, Chris? And that was an earlier item in the consent agenda was our plan on how to comply with that. The state is requiring every utility submit those plans to say, over the next many years, how do we anticipate meeting those different benchmark goals for renewable energy?
So it's not just a benefit for the community as a whole, but it benefits our city by being able to meet requirements?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This is great news for South Haven, so thanks for all your work on this.
Yeah.
So the first thing we do is approve the resolution?
That's correct. And I should state that I had, it was wrong, it was not EPA, it was USDA, so I apologize for that. So yes, first step would be approving the resolution and then the purchase power agreement.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution, which is item A?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-12, a resolution, excuse me, a resolution approving participation in the South Haven Affordable Solar LLC Distribution Energy Resource Project via amended agreement.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
One, is that 12, is that a typo? Should that be 17? Or is this because it's amended, it's an older one? It's 2025-12.
I think resolutions are numbered different than special events?
That's it, yep, okay.
Okay, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Moving on to B. Approve the proposed power purchase and interconnect agreements with South Haven Affordable Solar LLC. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the proposed power purchase and interconnect agreements with South Haven Affordable Solar LLC with any minor typographical errors corrected.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Dana.
Thanks.
Moving on, number 11. The City Council will be asked to consider the approval of engineering proposals and material purchases for the following projects as recommended by the Board of Public Utilities and staff. And A is at Beaver Court, and B is at the ravines. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. The BPU just recently looked at two projects. We've kind of put them together here as item 11, where we need to upgrade the lines there for either reliability or the lines are not up to our standards. We see additional development in both of these areas, Beaver Court and the ravines, which need some assistance. This is not a budgeted cost, but this is something that we'd like to get the engineering costs purchased in this year, this current fiscal year for work and construction in the next fiscal year. It would be on your CIP budget workshop that we'd be seeing in a couple of weeks. Chris May is our electric superintendent, who has more details on these two projects. But ultimately, in Beaver Court, which is along the lake shore, we're seeing additional reliability needed with some underground lines and/or overhead lines. As with the ravines, we've got some underlying line reconstruction that would assist, I think, sewer.
Lift station.
Lift station.
Are the ravines the homes next to Meyer?
That is correct.
Those ravines? Okay, thank you.
So just as Kate described, both these locations have just been on the radar but haven't not been part of our capital improvement plan. We found that with new homes being built along Beaver and Apache Court, the backyard lot line there, it just isn't up to today's standard to support the needs of the residents moving in there. And then with the lift station at the trailer park there next to Meyer, it's just so old, and there's been faults, there's been problems over the years. And we've, as a staff, done what we could to maintain and keep it up and running. However, we had a major outage a few weeks ago, a little over a month ago, where they lost power to their lift station. And we really found out how bad it was. So that's when we came to Dana and Kate and asked for this to be put on, you know, the capital improvement plan.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mary?
The outage, is that what was in front of the Meyer along Phoenix, or was that something else?
Nope, this was down in the ravine. You couldn't see it from the road.
Okay.
But because of the problems that we've had back there, it's just something that we feel is very necessary to do an upgrade on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll start with item A. Is there a motion to approve the Beaver Court Underground Electric Project with an estimated cost at $147,000, including engineering materials, construction contracts, and contingency, and authorize staff to execute the necessary documents?
I make a motion to approve Beaver Court Underground Electric Project, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Moving on to B. Is there a motion to complete the work of the ravines, underground line reconstruction project with an estimated cost of $246,000, including engineering materials, construction contracts, and contingency, and authorize staff to execute the necessary documents?
I move to approve the ravines underground line construction project, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. May. Moving on. The City Council will be asked to opt in to the Michigan Energy Assistance Program and Low-Income Energy Assistance Fund, Public Act 95, and direct staff to file notice with the Michigan Public Service Commission by April 1. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. So we've seen a number of new legislation coming down regarding electric utilities and ways to improve reliability. And this is a new amendment that would allow for municipalities, which until now have been able to opt out of certain low-income assistance programs. But here, we, as a municipality, we now have to opt in to this program with the state or opt out and create our own program. We've discussed this quite extensively with staff, and the BPU did also look this over. There's a lot of things we don't know right now about the state's program. And the good thing is, is that year over year, we can decide to opt in or create our own program. But at this time, with there's so many unknowns at this point, we're recommending to opt in to the state's program. But Dana can talk a little bit more about what this program is and how this will be beneficial to some customers.
Yeah, the MEAT program or Michigan Energy Assistance Program has been around for quite some time. The city has been able to opt out of that because we're a municipal-run utility. The new legislation kind of removes that option from us. And so we do have to make a decision to opt in or opt out. Opting in, this year, when we met with staff, we would have to create our whole own program that would have to be basically equivalent to the state's program. And so that's why the recommendation and the discussion coming out of the BPU was to opt in this year. It will result in a surcharge on customer bills either way because we do have to fund this energy assistance program. The state kind of expanded eligibility for the program. And so whereas before it was capped at a certain amount of money, there was really limited assistance available to customers in the state of Michigan to be able to apply for and use those funds. So the state did a couple of things. They expanded the eligibility of it, and they lifted the cap. And so electric utility customers across the state of Michigan are going to have this surcharge. And so it's not unique to South Haven by any means. So that's what's before you tonight is to look at, you know, the recommendation to opt into the program. The charges would go into effect October 1, I believe, of the year. The Michigan Public Service Commission will set those charges each year, and then they'll be reviewed each year after that. Customers within our utility for electricity as well as gas and home heating assistance can apply. can apply to the program, and it's a well-established state program that folks can utilize for assistance today. And so we do expect some of our customers will utilize this fund, and then we'll get information on how many customers within the county, how many of our customers are utilizing the funds, so that in future years, we can evaluate, do we want to stay with the state-run program or try and break off and create our own?
Any other questions for Dana? Wendy?
So, have our customers not been able to get this assistance in the past because we haven't opted into it?
No, I think we have a few customers that, that were able to go through the MEET program and get some bill pay assistance. It's just, we were able to do that as a municipal utility without having our own program. Now we do have to participate in that.
Okay, and then, I don't know if you said this and I missed it, but when would residents know the impact on their?
So I believe the, the surcharge goes into effect statewide on October 1st, so that's when.
Okay, that'll be the first.
When our customers would see that, yeah.
Okay.
And right now, the proposed rate is a dollar 25 per month per meter on residential customers.
Okay. And then, this isn't a question, but I, I know that we all kind of have high utility bills anyway here, and nobody really wants to pay more in general, but I feel like this kind of program that can provide assistance for people who really need it is really important right now, and I, I like to see that we're doing this, actually.
Yeah, I think the state put out a press release and noted some 355,000 people will probably utilize the, the program with the modifications that are in place.
Awesome, thank you.
Great. Mary?
Just, um, so this program already exists at the state level, correct? And it's just now expanding to who can be covered, so potentially more of our customers can be covered?
Correct.
And for those who were not covered, I believe we had, the city had something set up for when people couldn't afford their bills? Was that just to spread the cost across payments, or how was that, or, or was the city giving reductions? How was that handled?
My understanding, it was more like a payment plan.
Okay.
Because we could, we couldn't turn off after a certain amount of time, and some folks weren't keeping up with their bills, so when the, you know, April came around and we look at shut-off season, that's kind of a large bill to pay, so we try to work with folks to make a payment plan to get things kind of right set, so they're not on the shut-off list.
So it's not that we had something similar to actually reduce it, it was just spreading the cost out, so the, the payment was spread across payments as opposed to all?
My understanding, yes.
Okay, so actually potentially increasing the number of people who could qualify?
Yep.
And, and we didn't have a program already in place? It's, it was spreading out the, the payment, so there's nothing on, we would have to build from scratch?
We would, and what's also part of this is that if we were to opt in our own, or create our own program, we would be also responsible for home heating credits, which I think the gas company would have to.
Yeah, so the way the legislation is set up is that, because most people pay an electrical bill, that the electric utility has to collect the funds, and then they're available to people for both electricity and home heating. So, anyone who's a City of South Haven Electrical customer can apply for home heating assistance, whether they're on propane or natural gas, as well as electrical bill pay assistance, if they qualify. And so through the state program, they would contact the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, MDHHS, and that's who they, that would be their first point of contact, to see if they qualify and they're eligible for that program.
Yeah, so it seems like, I mean, we're going to have to implement this one way or the other, we don't have a choice.
Correct.
And it seems like opting in is a much simpler way considering we can reevaluate each year.
Yes.
Because they already have the infrastructure and we don't.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to go forward with the opt-in?
I make a motion that we approve the opt-in to the Michigan Energy Assistance Program and Low Income Energy Assistance Fund, Public Act 95, and direct staff to file notice with the Michigan Public Service Commission by April 1st.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes, thank you.
Thanks.
Finally, number 13, the city council will be asked to discuss and consider approval of an ordinance regarding the licensing of short-term rentals entitled, "An Ordinance to amend Subparagraph 116G1C to enact Section 10-246 and to enact Article 5 of Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of South Haven." Kate?
Thank you Mayor. Well, we are here at a potential adoption here of our STR licensing ordinance. There's been a lot of work that's been put into this since we started our work group in later January, and what we have here provided for the council tonight is the, is the draft ordinance, we have some bracketed language in the bracketed language document, and then we have a red line that shows the changes from, I think, our 3.3 version till today. Last week was quite busy, myself, Dave, Kelly met with some stakeholders on, on the kind of pro STR side and then the resident side, so we've, we've got quite a bit of feedback. And then, of course, then also the STR work group met on Thursday night and did a very long session, which was very fruitful, that we now have this document for, before us. We've kind of walked through a number of, of the concepts that are presented in here. We're happy to answer any questions and talk about anything the council would like to look at, and then I understand there may be some amendments being proposed by some members to kind of help facilitate this discussion. We've kind of put in the staff report, like, a method of maybe, you know, making a motion to adopt the ordinance with a second, and then going through a number of motions on each individual change, if that's what council would like to do. But again, we're here to answer any questions that council may have about the draft ordinance, the languages that are in, language that is in there, and again, I'm happy to put this up on the screen so we can all look at this together.
What would you like to do?
I'd like to have it on the screen.
Okay. That sounds good.
All right, so I'm on this first section, which is a lot of definitions, but this is the first, this is the ordinance here. So is there a particular section you want to look at?
Do you want to advance to the parts that were sort of controversial, for example, people per bedroom and the occupancy?
I can go there. It's going to be scrolling, so I.
That's fine.
Forgive me if it's going to make anyone feel sick. So, we're here, section 7, which discusses maximum occupancy.
Okay, so, and bring us up to speed on what it is now.
Okay, so we can discuss this maximum occupancy, which shall not exceed the lesser of two of the following, so A is two occupants per bedroom plus two occupants per finished story, reduced to the number of occupants with compliant sleeping areas. Sleeping areas is defined earlier in the document. B, 12 occupants, or if the dwelling unit was previously registered as a short-term rental under Article 10 of Chapter 10, the number of occupants, the dwelling unit was authorized as part of its registration, whichever is greater.
So it caps it at 12?
It caps it at 12, provided that you meet other rationales.
Okay.
Dave?
How did?
Oh.
It caps it at 12 unless you had a higher number previously, in which case you have the opportunity to go for that higher number in terms of a hard cap, but you still have to satisfy all of the safety requirements in the ordinance.
Okay, and we're no longer going with a bathroom on every floor?
Correct.
That was eliminated.
There's still a requirement that.
It has to be adjacent to.
An adjacent floor, but we're not, that chart that counted bathrooms, like, number of bathrooms for occupants isn't there anymore, there's still the old requirement of bathrooms on an adjacent, the floor the bedroom is on or on an adjacent floor.
Okay, someone talked to me today and they have an older home that was built in 1908 that is now being used as a short-term rental. So in 1908, there was not a bathroom on the, you know, the upper story that had three bedrooms. So will they be required to install a bathroom? Is that one of the requirements?
Is it a two-story home there?
Yes.
And the bedrooms we're talking about are on the second story?
There are three bedrooms on the top story and two on the bottom.
And the bathroom is on the first floor?
Yes.
That would qualify, that would meet the requirements because the bathroom would be on an adjacent story.
Okay, I see, thank you.
Yes, we, I'm well aware of the older homes and lack of bathrooms, and when the bathroom section had been added in, I mean, as I had said last time, I was, I saw it when it was published in the agenda packet, so, I'm trying, we, we really did strive to reach a balance. Before occupancy, so for clarification, it's up to 12, but one factor that we really focused on was safety for occupancy, and so, the number of occupants, two per bedroom and two per finished floor could be reduced if the sleeping areas are not compliant with the safety egress requirements of, so for a flex sleeping area, it's number six, and for a bedroom, it's number five.
Does anyone else have questions?
I, I was, yeah, thank you. I was just wondering if there's a broader definition for flex sleeping space, or not broader definition, an actual definition.
Yes, there is.
It was added in the definition section?
Okay. I'm just seeing the section 14, like, the reference to section 14-505.
We did the same thing we did with bedrooms where we, it's a defined term in the definitions, but to go and look at what is, what constitutes a bedroom, you have to go down to the requirement section, so on your, it would be on page 8.
Thank you. Well, so, page 232.
Oh, thank you Mary.
Well, 232, 233 is where they go, so the flex room is on page 233.
Right, and I want to clarify, when I was talking earlier about the cap, it's safety requirements, but you still have to, you have to qualify for it by meeting your two per occupants, two per floor, two per finished story, reduced by the number of occupants with compliant sleeping areas, so you still got to meet the qualifications for it, it's just the cap may be able to moved up, depending on your prior registration.
Yeah, so for the flex sleeping area to work under six, you need to meet all of those four requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Does the council want to go through every item and vote on every item, or what's your pleasure?
Uh, Mayor, I just wanted to have a couple other discussion points. So for the sleeping room, so one of the bracketed items, which was on page 246 of the agenda packet, so that was requiring a bedroom to have a functioning door. Our current zoning ordinance requires a bedroom to have a functioning door, and it does exclude efficiency units because by definition efficiencies don't have a separate bedroom. And that is in the bracketed section, so that could potentially be added. Kate, I didn't know if you wanted to discuss, there were two areas that we received a fair number of questions. One was from Bob Sherman about the new management aspect of it, where the operator is the licensee or a proper, property management company. The other one was the transfer of the regulatory license versus the transfer of the property, just to make sure everybody's clear on that aspect.
Well, I know we talked about owner and operator in our work group, and we're trying to make sure that, well, an operator is somebody who does the day-to-day leasing of, of the item, and the owner is obviously the person who owns it. I know that when Bob had come up, there was two sections that said the same thing, except for one was for the owner and one was for the operator section.
Uh, but, no, so currently, so Granicus has the number of an agent who may be the owner, may be a property manager, or may not be either of those two. And under this new ordinance, Granicus will have the licensee who's the owner or a property management number, correct? Those would, one of those two numbers are the number that Granicus would have to contact in case of a complaint.
That's correct.
And, so, and with that, we did remove the distance requirement, so, and changed that to a 45-minute return time call to Granicus upon the complaint.
That's correct.
Being called out. Do you want, would it be beneficial to go into why that change was made?
That it was 45 minutes or that it was?
No, no, the property management.
I mean, I think that was something that came out of either public comment or some of the comments that we'd received, the email, is that, I believe that property managers through our license through the state of Michigan, under a broker's, broker's license.
But I think, Laura, the state licensing, don't, it's my understanding that they require management of property to be a property manager, is that why that change was made?
Yeah, the state of Michigan requires that property managers, as that term is defined in the statute, be, be licensed, and the discussions in the work group are such that, okay, when Granicus is calling somebody, we want it to be somebody that has some skin in the game, and we know licensee have skin in the game, but what we don't want to be doing on the former agent's side is dealing with, you know, a neighbor or a friend or something, we want to be dealing with somebody who we will have a higher likelihood of getting a better response from. And recognizing that the state of Michigan requires property management, property managers to be licensed, we thought it made sense to say, okay, well, that's who, if you want a property manager, which is really what these people are doing, some of them may not be licensed as they should, we want, we're going to clarify that you have to be a licensed property manager. And that doesn't mean a short-term rental owner couldn't have, you know, a handyman or somebody else, or even somebody else who they want the, the renters to call. The point is that when the city calls, the city is going to be calling the licensee or a licensed operator.
Yeah, and, and I think that comment came from Ryan Servetus, from an email. And then, so, also with the transfer of the regulatory license, so it's my understanding that the, the regulatory license, even under the current ordinance, did not, had to be re-registered.
That's correct. I mean, the license that says, just says there, this is not transferable. The idea is that the license is issued to that person with that application. Should the property sell, they come in, they fill out a new lease, a new application, and depending on where they're at in the, in the process, either they're halfway through and they've, they've just gotten done with their, their inspection, but if nothing materially changes, we're just going to be using that almost like a property transfer form, I mean, I mean, like a new property form, but it's, again, it's, it's, it's to the actual new owner, and they have a new agent and all that is, that is put in the new application.
And technically, then I believe if renting continues before that is done, that, that previously registr, previous license would be invalid upon transfer of the, the property, correct?
Yes, it's, it's just tough because we don't always get property transfer affidavits, they don't always get filed, so we're, we're looking to find when that, that transfer is happening for those new, those new owners to come in and register with us. Is that a fair assessment, Kelly?
That would definitely be something to put in the FAQs to make sure people understand that that should be done.
Do you have a comment?
And, excuse me, one of the comments we got out of, with the stakeholders meeting was, okay, if the previous draft said only owners can apply and only owners can be licensed, well, does that mean if I have to wait till I'm an owner, now I'm at least 45 days away from a license? So we modified the language to say only owners can be issued a license, which provides, as will be addressed in the FAQ, some flexibility to say, okay, if you're in the process of purchasing this, purchasing this home, provided you have the current owner's okay, you know, we can go in, we can do our inspection, we can move the process along. Again, your passing inspection is only good for 45 days, but then, once the transfer is complete, you can put your application in for a license and it, you just got to pay your fees at that point.
Okay. Do you want to move on? What would you like to do?
Well, I know that we have some bracketed language, and that was something we could not come to consensus in our, in our session. We can probably discuss that, and then I know that there's a number of amendments that the membership might want to make. So do we want to talk about the bracketed language then? Since we're kind of in this section?
Sure.
Go ahead, Dave.
Council's decision, I'd recommend that, just for the sake of clarity, that we just follow the outline in the staff report, so we could, if we could have a motion, if council wants to, to adopt the ordinance, and then in discussion, we could go ahead and make the motions for the amendments, but that way the main motion has been made. We know what's on the table, and that'll make it, hopefully make the process a little smoother.
Okay, so you want us to vote on number 13?
Or make a motion and then get a second so we can start looking at amendments.
Got it, got it. Okay, is there a motion to consider approval of number 13?
I move to adopt the ordinance entitled, "Ordinance to amend sub-paragraph 1-16-G1C to enact Section 10-246 and to enact Article 5 of Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of South Haven."
Second.
Any discussion? Here we go.
So do we want to start with the bracketed section on page 246? That's in the Agenda Packet?
Sure, that's the first one.
Yeah, that's actually the second one that I had brought up, but, so 246, I would move to insert Section F at the end of Section 14-505A5. To insert F excluding efficiency units, the room or space must be separated from other habitable spaces by a functioning door. Do I have support?
I would support that.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm good with that change.
Okay. Just to read it again, F is excluding efficiency units, the room or space must be separated from other habitable spaces by a functioning door. Okay, um, do you, do we want to vote? Do we need roll calls? How about George?
I would, I would say let's do a roll call, just each time we want to do an amendment, just to make, make it go.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
You got it. Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins? Arnold?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
On page 243, under Section 14-502A, I would move to strike comma and resorts and insert immediately before hospitals and. Do I have support?
Will you say that again?
This is kind of a typo, or you want to remove resorts?
Removing resorts, correct.
Gotcha.
So it's.
Do you mind telling us why?
I think we need a second to discuss.
I'll second.
Okay.
Discussion?
So all the other items that were in there had a legal basis in the zoning ordinance that were specifically excluded from short-term rentals. Resorts are not, and before we add a term to be excluded, I would rather have a list of all the properties that are supposedly resorts, so that we can understand what we are and are not excluding from short-term licenses, short-term rentals. Here, I think there's just lack of clarity exactly what is and is not a resort, and I don't want something inadvertently being identified as a resort when it should not be, and then being excluded from short-term rentals when it should not be excluded.
I guess I got a question on that.
Go ahead.
So if it is a resort, I don't see how it could be a resort and be a short-term rental at the same time. So I don't, I don't see a reason why we would need to do this change.
Again, I would like to know exactly what is considered to be a resort, and that we have agreement what is and is not a resort, because I'm not sure there's a clear list. And so before we exclude something from being a short-term rental, I would like to know exactly what is being excluded, what properties fall within that, to ensure that there have not been any mistakes.
I guess I, if, if there are any resorts, and resorts is a category in the zoning ordinance, so I don't see why we would not exclude resorts if they're, I mean, if we would not have them as short-term rentals.
Again, we don't have a clear list of what is and is not allegedly a resort. This was added last minute, I believe, based on a comment at Planning Commission. It wasn't part of our discussion, and we never really discussed it in any detail. So before adding something to be excluded, and this is a living document, so we can always add it subsequently, that we have a list of what is and is not a resort before we start excluding it.
And we can always exclude it later, too, or remove it later, because it is a living document.
And removing it then creates an expectation that it's excluded, and so I don't want to have any allegations that when we go to strike it, we're affecting property rights, because we're not. So it's easier to add it later than remove it later.
I don't support this change.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Kate, is that possible to get a list of resorts that are at the city limits and verify that they're not renting as short-term rentals?
I'll have to check and see what we have.
Okay.
Okay, where are we now?
Any other discussion or a vote?
Oh, we've got a motion and a second for this particular change.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I won't be supporting it because I have reason to believe that this is not what the Planning Commission wanted.
And I just want to comment to the audience that city council received these amendments at about 1:00 today, and you didn't receive them at all, so you did not have access to this, so.
And I want to go on record that it was discussed in the working group and was opted not to provide, be provided as unsupported bracketed items, which could have been provided as bracketed items for discussion.
Like I said, Mary Hosley emailed this to city council at 1:00 today. Okay, ready for a roll call on this?
And again, it could have been part of the record.
It's Joe, it's turn.
Just like to ask our city attorney your thoughts on it, because you've been quiet about this.
My thoughts are this, if the resorts, as George said, are a named use in the zoning ordinance, there are resorts that exist, from, from my perspective, it doesn't matter who is a resort, it's the fact that they are, the city has called them a resort, and they are an established use under the zoning district, or under the zoning ordinance. So if council wants those who are currently operating as resorts to now be considered short-term rentals, because presumably they are renting for 28 days, commercially for 28 days or less, if you want them to be considered STRs, deleting that language, deleting the term resorts would have that effect. If you do not want them to be considered STRs and you do not want them to have a license, leaving it as is would have that effect.
Okay.
So if they're listed as a resort, I don't even know where they would be listed at. I don't know if there's something in the city that, per zoning use.
Yeah, they're.
They have signed a document saying they are a resort or whatever.
That's, that's the problem, is that they're not specifically identified as a resort. It's just staff's determination that they've always been rented, so they're a resort. But I know of some situations that a rebuilding has to have a short-term rental, and I know of other situations where they're a resort, and, and they filed before the ZBA to become a resort, and the hearing was never held. So the ZBA never gave them a variance to be a resort, but now all of a sudden they are a resort. That's the problem. So again, this is for regulatory licensing purposes, and this was just raised as a suggestion by, at Planning Commission, the last time I knew, city council, not the Planning Commission, set policy. So to be fair to all of the stakeholders, some of which have been identified as a resort, but there's no official list, and others have been required to get a short-term permit, short-term rental permit for each of their dwellings. Out of fairness, I think that we should have a list so that we know exactly what, what are the resorts going forward.
Okay, roll call?
Onuki?
Will you remind me what we're voting on right now?
Absolutely, yes. At the end of Section 14-502A, we're moving to strike comma and resorts and insert and immediately before hospitals.
Okay, um, yes, whoa, sorry, yes.
Okay, Reeser?
No.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
And Brown?
No.
That is four no's, three yeses, motion fails.
Thank you.
Kate, is, I mean, is there any way that we can, like, just double-check this in the near future to see?
Yes, we'll look into that.
Living documents.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next Hosley amendment.
Personal point of order, your, Mayor, these are not mine. Residents have come to me, I have listened to them, I have listened to fellow city council members, and because they, again, I reiterate, these were brought up during the working group, they should have been presented, had the presentation been fair and equitable, just like item F. But it was chosen by the staff and the attorney who drafted these not to include them. I did not get to see what was and was not bracketed before the Agenda Packet issued. So these are not my amendments, these are the amendments for the community based on community input.
Oh, this is the email that came from you today.
But I would also like to say, we all are allowed to make amendments and have discussions, and just because Mary is the only one who did it in this manner, she shouldn't be singled out, like, it's no different than if I presented a.
Right, I just.
I just don't like this kind of.
No, I'm.
Derogatory.
Oh, it's not derogatory, I'm informing the public, I'm informing the public of where this came from.
Yes, and I'm informing the public, and I'm informing the public why I was forced to bring this, because staff and the attorney did not.
Okay, I see, I see the attorney has a comment.
I'm going to just say, I'd like to keep going. I think that we spent a lot of time on last Thursday night, in fact, over six hours with this group.
Okay.
And in fact, we made a lot of changes on the screen, just like we're doing right now. And I understand there's a lot of emotion with this topic, so if we can kind of stay on topic and move down the road, we've got a lot of, we've got more things to do. So I appreciate everyone's patience and your willingness to get this done.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we are on.
Page 247?
Yep.
And Section 14-506, after F, insert G.
Oh, did you skip 505?
Oops, thank you. 247, yes, Section 14-505I and J. So under I, after 1, insert 2, that will read, "There shall be no more than two," number 2 in parentheses, "rental terms in any time period of seven consecutive days." Strike 2 and replace with 3. Under J, after number 1, insert 2, "There shall be no more than two," paren, two, "rental terms in any time period of seven, seven in paren, consecutive days." Strike 2, replace with 3, strike 3, replace with 4.
Kelly, are you familiar with this? Does this happen a lot that you've heard of?
The rental turnover, is that what you're asking me about?
Like, for just two or three days?
I guess I would really hesitate, hesitate to speak on behalf of, you know, the entire rental community in South Haven. I do think that we do see a lot of weekly rentals during the summertime. I do think more so during the off-season, we see shorter rental terms.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Mayor, you cut us off.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Yes, in fact, the township requires everything be a week, no less than a week. So, and, and one concern that I have heard from residents, especially families with younger children, is the hotel effect with the revolving door, where there are multiple two-night stays in one week. And so this would add, because of the commercial activity, this would add some normalcy back to the micro-community around any short-term rental that has, that may have had multiple two-night stays in one week period.
Any other, George?
So this, this is something we did talk about in our, in our working group, and so I, I don't believe we should do this change. One is because, kind of like Kelly was saying, most of the rentals during the summertime are weekly rentals, and I would like to give more flexibility, especially in the off-season, to people trying to rent their property for shorter stays if it's otherwise, it's going to be vacant. I also believe that the more requirements we add, the more we have to enforce. So this is just another thing that staff is going to have to monitor and make sure people are complying with it, and I would just as soon let the market determine this. And I, living next to short-term rentals, to me, the turnover issue is not a big deal. to me, the turnover issue is not a big deal.
I agree, that's in my neighborhood too. They're usually there for at least a week. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll just weigh in on that. I hear from a lot of residents a concern about more rentals than once a week. I happen to call Kalamazoo, find out what their rules are, and if the zoning manager there told me the right information, it's one week minimum. So, and they do not allow any short-term rental in any residential area. So, I think we're being pretty flexible to do it. That's my position, my position.
Okay. Ready for a roll call?
Okay, Reeser?
If I say yes, I'm supporting the motion.
That's correct.
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
And then page 248.
What is the next part under 247? Is that the same?
Pardon?
Uh, did we vote on number 2, and then is there, I have two number 2s on my page.
It's class 1 and class 2.
Yeah, it's-
Got it.
It's I and J.
Thank you. Okay, 248.
Under section 14-506, add a new G, that would read, "Upon revocation of the license, a dwelling unit cannot be relicensed for a period of 365 days and cannot be used as a short-term rental until relicensed. The dwelling unit may be relicensed after the 365-day period if all the licensing requirements of this ordinance and the zoning ordinance are satisfied, and if short-term rental is still a permitted use under the zoning ordinance in the area where the dwelling unit is located." G would be relettered to H, H would be relettered to I.
Kate, is there a motion for this?
I just moved-
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion. Kate, can you tell me when this, can you describe the scenario? So, upon revocation of the license, that the dwelling unit would be empty for 365 days. So what does that look like?
I'm gonna type this out, because I wanna put this on the screen for everyone else to kind of look at, but Kelly or Dave is, can you kind of jump in here while I'm typing this out?
What, what's the question, Mayor?
What, what is this scenario like? So some, there's a license that's revoked because of-
Yeah, so the ordinance lays out a couple bases for which a license can be revoked, and it implements an appeals process for that. There's a hearing officer and everything. And the current language says that once it's revoked, you shall not apply for, or be issued a license for a period of 365 days following the date of revocation. So it provides a, what some people would call a cooling-off period.
For a year.
For a year.
So-
That, that's in sub F.
Okay. And then, so the, the revocation is from failing inspections or breaking rules?
The revocation, if you look, for everyone's reference, to, page 235 of the packet, and I'm looking at sub C, "The rental inspector may issue a notice of revocation and revoke a license in accordance with subsection E if there have been two or more municipal civil infraction determinations resulting from the licensee's or operator's violation of section 14-509 within the current licensing term concerning the short-term rental for which the license is revoked." And then, sub D states, "The rental inspector may issue a notice of revocation and revoke a license in accordance in subsection E in the short, if the short-term rental site, if the short-term rental was the site of two or more violations of any of the following provisions of the code for which conviction or municipal civil infraction determination resulted within the current licensing term, Article 2 of Chapter 30, Article 3 of Chapter 30, and Article 5 of Chapter 54." So, big picture, there's two ways you can get a license revoked. It's one, if there's two qualifying violations that result in municipal civil infractions that are adjudicated responsible by the licensee or the operator. And then two, this is similar to what is in the current code with some modifications, but if there is a violation by a renter of a certain provision of the code that results in either a conviction or a municipal civil infraction determination.
Okay.
So those are the two bases by which a license could be revoked. And again, it goes to the notice and hearing procedures.
And this, this proposal is consistent with what the current ordinance 10-245B3 includes.
Okay.
So it's just carrying over something that had not been put in there.
Okay, George?
So, one of the reasons I don't like this change is because I feel it mixes zoning and regulatory. So, going back to the-
Mayor, can we have the, whoever has the phone, that's very distracting.
He has his tech assistant with him now. Okay.
So, yeah, I don't really like this change, just because I think it mixes zoning and regulatory. The, uh, the determination of whether or not something meets the current zoning ordinance and should not, no longer have a particular land use should stay in the zoning ordinance and not be in the regulatory ordinance, in my opinion, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Wendy?
So if we didn't have it here, is it currently in the zoning ordinance, and/or could we include that in there?
I believe the intent of this section is met already with the language of the licensing ordinance, in that, once your license is revoked, and you have your cooling-off period, if you want to get relicensed, you would still have to apply for a license. You would have to meet, you'd have to go through all the hoops of getting licensed, which means, again, you would have to get inspected, you'd have to pay any applicable fees, you'd have to get a zoning compliance determination. So I, I, and from my perspective, this is simply restating in less clear terms what is already going to be required of the individual if they are seeking licensure.
Thank you. Mary?
But I, without this, couldn't they just sell it and somebody else could relicense it? Because the current is that, that person cannot be issued a license, but this prevents the dwelling unit from getting a license, so this actually provides more than what's currently in there.
So, yes, you know, you're correct. This, so this would say if person A owned the, owned the dwelling unit, and it was, their license is revoked, if they sold the property, a new person couldn't seek a license through no fault of their own, is what this would essentially say. I, and I, this was discussed in the work group session, you know, the issue of what if it's just transferred. My opinion on that is, if it's a different person, it's a different person. Now, person's defined broadly, so in theory, if person A had an LLC and that LLC owned the property, and then they were revoked, and they wanted to set up a new LLC, that would still be the, a different person, but they would be going, it'd be, it'd be a new entity. That would be, they'd be going through the hoops of setting up a new LLC and doing all of, all of these things.
So if it was sold to, to another person, then this would just keep carrying on?
If I understand Councilmember Hosley correctly, what she's, what the intent is to say is, look, if a dwelling unit has its license revoked, then that dwelling unit, regardless of any new ownership, is ineligible for a license.
For one year.
Say again?
For one year.
Yes.
For one year.
Even if there was a completely new owner?
That would be, that might understand what the intent of the amendment is.
So the new owner is being sort of punished for the, the mistakes of the previous person?
Well, not really, because the previous person had, should be fully transparent and let the new owner know of the restriction on renting. But more importantly, and, and the point, the biggest point that's being missed, is that our current zoning ordinance identifies established zoning use, and it says that the zoning use continues until the short-term rental registration lapses for a period of a year or is revoked pursuant to 10-245 of the code. So, contrary to popular belief, the, the established zoning use can be terminated by revocation, and one of the goals, one of our primary goals, has always been reducing the number of short-term rentals in our residential areas and trying to get them in the CBB and other areas that were not traditionally family. And the amendments that have been provided really strike out with regard to that aspect of the goal. And because this was in the ordinance as it currently exists, it seems only appropriate that it be carried over, especially now that we are finally recognizing that these are commercial uses in residential property, and residents are speaking out, that they, we are not trying to eliminate. So don't misquote me, don't do misinformation. I am simply bringing over from our current code to the new code that was created, and, and by creating a new code, you don't see what has been stricken. And this was, for lack of better description, stricken. And this is really the, the meat of it for what the residents, our, our bosses, the electorate, have told us we want. And the biggest thing to keep in mind is, if everyone is as compliant as they say they are, this will never, ever happen.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question for you, Dave. So, if I'm a short-term rental owner, and I'm a crummy short-term rental owner, and I lose my license, then, and then, so this comes into play, it's affecting me, I'm out for a year, this, as it's written, it would prevent me from restructuring my LLC and reapplying.
The amended, the proposed language?
Yeah, if this passes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, this would also, if you are in the non-overlay district, you would lose your land use, which I don't think we should be doing that in the regulatory ordinance.
Okay. Are we ready for a roll call? Megan?
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
And Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
So the last one is on page 249, section 14-507, and after city, that is followed by employee of the city, insert, "and shall not be a relative supervisor or close friend or share a financial interest with a city employee who is involved with the administration or enforcement of this article."
Was that your motion?
Yeah, I, I moved to insert after, after employee of the city, so after city, insert, "and shall not be a relative supervisor or close friend or share a financial interest with a city employee who is involved with the administration or enforcement of this article."
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Oh, let me read the whole thing. "The city manager shall appoint, subject to confirmation by the city council, a hearing officer for the purpose of hearing appeals under this article. The term of appointment will be for one year. The hearing officer must be an individual qualified by training or experience to hear appeals under this article, and shall not be an employee of the city, and shall not be a relative, supervisor, or close friend, or administration, or enforcement of this article. The hearing officer may be removed by the city manager for misfeasance, malfeasance, or nonfeasance in the performance of the hearing officer's duties."
You missed a line, but-
Oh, where did I miss it?
A financial interest.
Financial interest.
Oh, financial interest, thank you.
Yeah. And I, I made this recommendation so that the hearing officer is completely independent, so that it's full transparency, there's no association with the people administering the short-term rental ordinance.
And how would you describe a close friend?
Well, this actually is taken out of the conflict of interest language for the Planning Commission, so I certainly hope that the, the city manager, the zoning administrator, and legal counsel would be able to identify what that means, because it was just added to the bylaws, through much assistance from the legal counsel.
What's a close friend?
Good question, Mayor. I, I agree that, if, if the, the point you're making is that the, the term is somewhat ambiguous, I agree that it is somewhat ambiguous. I will also note that the, to address Councilmember Hosley's concerns, the individual would be appointed, it would be confirmed by city council, so council would have the opportunity, if they believed there was a relationship that would undermine the impartiality of the hearing officer, to simply not confirm the individual. And there's, I believe, an anti-nepotism policy the city has already also.
With the, with the council and the city manager, yes.
George?
So, first of all, if, if the employee of the city, their supervisor is also an employee of the city, so right away, you don't need the word supervisor in there, because that automatically is another employee of the city. I, personally, this, this seems unnecessary, and there's all sorts of things you can continue to add on, on this person's, what you want or may not want. And I think, I feel strongly that the city manager would pick a good person. I don't need to have all this extra language in here that would, that I feel doesn't really do anything.
Thank you.
Again, I, I took the language literally out of the conflict of interest, which is version 4, from the, I'm guessing from the attorneys, based on the numbering system, it's consistent. That was before the Planning Commission at the February meeting, and that is what came forward for the Planning Commission to vote on for their bylaws for conflict of interest.
And we have, Kate, we have conflict of interest rules, we have nepotism rules already, right?
We, we do, and I think that Attorney Everly was, you know, also making the point that this is a hearing officer that's confirmed by the council, so if there's a reason that you don't believe that this proposed hearing officer is unable to discharge their duties fairly, you don't have to confirm them. I'm not sure, I don't know what the version 4 is from the bylaws, but I wasn't sure if that included, I'm not sure, like, a supervisor of the Planning Commission, because they're not city employees?
Well, I would interpret supervisor, people could have more than one job, so it could be a supervisor in a different capacity. And these are for planning commissioners who are not employees of the city. So, and I, I, I'm assuming it was the same law firm-
So, and I, I'm assuming it was the same law firm that worked on this, that drafted it. So, again, I just, I simply took it out of the conflict of interest aspect from the planning commission bylaws. It's just, it avoids the city council, or I should say, it adds more objectivity, so that if the city council does not confirm somebody, that, that lack of confirmation is reinforced if it, if the proposed person is, I, any of those options.
Any more discussion?
Mayor, I will add, in the planning commission context, it lists it out, but the planning commission, there's a mechanism for like voting on whether or not, the rest of the planning commission votes to say whether or not there's a conflict of interest. So in that situation, the person could, the commissioner could say, I have reasonable cause to believe that Joe is a close friend of mine, and his property is up for a permit, I'm disclosing that. And then when he explains the nature of that relationship, the planning commission could say, no, we don't believe that qualifies as a close friend for the purpose of our bylaws, we declare there's no conflict of interest. And again, those are, those are bylaws, which are different than, inherently different than an ordinance.
Thank you.
But again, council's discretion.
Right. Okay. Wendy?
I just wanted to add that, I mean, simply because South Haven is such a small town, and there's so much overlap, this would, to me, make me feel better that this person is going to have as much objectivity as possible, which I think would be important.
Any other discussion? Joe?
Yeah, my only question, mainly to the city attorney, is there any downside to that little extra protection of changing the language?
The downs, excuse me, the downside would be that you are further narrowing the pool of individuals who could, under your ordinance, be eligible for that position, you know, again, understanding that you do have the ultimate right of confirmation. So it's a practical matter, you can take every case on a case-by-case basis, but you are, by ordinance in this sense, limiting who is technically eligible for that position.
Okay. Roll call?
Before we get to roll call, we know that there's a motion, but I guess we missed that there was a second. Was there a second on this motion?
I'll second. I thought, I thought.
I didn't actually know there was, okay. All righty, Wilkins?
If you.
Let's just...
I'll second.
No, yeah, sorry.
We're voting.
Vote.
Oh, yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
That is it.
Okay. Moving on, what else? Where are we next? Is that it?
At this point, we've had a number of motions been made, I've been tracking that with the track changes, so I believe if that's where you all are looking to land, then at this point, we have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended as whole, or did our individual votes to do that?
Are there no further amendments, I guess is my first question?
That's it.
Correct.
Okay. Then Mayor, the question could be restated as, the question is on whether to adopt the ordinance to amend sub-paragraph one, Act 16G1C, to enact section 10-246, and to enact Article 5 of Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of South Haven as amended. So that's just simply restating the main motion, which has subsequently been amended by the amendments council now voted on, and now if there are no further amendments, the main motion would be before council for a vote, i.e., the ordinance as it has been amended by the amendments.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So I would move to adopt the ordinance...
No, no, no further motion is needed.
Oh.
The main motion's still on the table.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. And we also have a second on the table for that, then.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, sorry, just to be clear, when we vote right now, it is for the amended changes.
That's correct.
The ordinance as it has been amended, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is to vote on the new short-term rental ordinance?
As amended.
With, as amendment, as amend, okay. Roll call?
You got it. Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Anything else?
Public comments.
I'm on the agenda.
Time for public comments. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda, and you have up to three minutes.
Let's pass this round.
Sure.
To me, the community is Casco Township, Geneva Township, South Haven Township, and the city of South Haven. I love this community. I have been South Haven Charter Township Supervisor for over 30 years. I was on the negotiating team for the historic water sewer agreement that led to Shaza, of which I'm a founding member. I was on the study team for the fire and ambulance service that created Shays. I'm a founding member. I was a part of the group that formed Shara, of which I'm a founding member. I've attended over a thousand public meetings during those 30 years. The purpose of those meetings has been to increase the quality of life for the residents of the community and increasing the experience of the visitors to our wonderful community. Never before have I been FOIA'd for comments that I have been made to try to make this a better community. I am saddened and disappointed by this action. The motives behind this action are questionable at best. The FOIA against my eight-year-old granddaughter was morally deplorable. We need to be a community to survive and grow. This action was definitely not transparent or very neighborly. I'm always willing to discuss issues, but wasn't contacted.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you.
Can you pull your mic?
Oh, sure. Is that better?
Yeah.
Hi, Sean Olney. I came before you numerous times, but most recently in 2022, I was awarded by the council and by the city for my 25-plus years of service as a police officer for the city of South Haven. I served proudly, and I still serve in the community in other ways. I have a service heart. However, it is with great disappointment that I express my strong concerns regarding the recent selection of our new police chief. The decision to appoint an individual who does not meet the minimum posted qualifications for the position is troubling. It sends the wrong message to the dedicated members of the South Haven Police Department, as well as the residents of South Haven who rely on competent, experienced leadership to keep our community safe. This decision has damaged morale in a way that will be difficult to repair. Officers feel their hard work and dedication mean nothing, the standards they are expected to uphold do not apply to the department leadership, and their voices are definitely not being heard by city leadership. This impacts retention. Good officers are going to go where they are recognized. Recruitment, it's a small state, it'll get around that South Haven is not the place to go to feel supported. And overall effectiveness of a police department, they'll struggle with motivation and uncertainty of their future. While I understand that the city manager has the authority to make this hiring decision, I also know that the city council, you, have the responsibility to ensure that the interests of the community and the department are being served. I ask you, why was an individual who does not meet the state qualifications, the state, excuse me, the stated qualifications, why was this person selected? Why were well-qualified internal candidates passed over? What steps will be taken to address the concerns and morale issues caused by this decision?
One minute.
I urge city council to address and acknowledge the concerns of current and former officers regarding this hiring decision, commit to fairness and adherence to qualifications in future hiring processes, and ensure that the leadership of the South Haven Police Department is built on merit, experience, and the ability to lead effectively. The officers of this department, many of whom I have worked alongside, they deserve better. The citizens of this community deserve better. And I urge this council to take the necessary steps to restore confidence in department leadership and ensure that decisions moving forward are in the best interests of both the police force and the community it serves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Brad Lubbers, I'm District 3, Allen County Commissioner in Allen County, so I represent Casco, Lee, Cheshire, Townships to the North, so I wanted to make a short visit to your meeting. And the only thing I would bring up is a report regarding South Haven area topics is we are working heavily with Holtech, formerly known as Palisades, to get the nuclear power plant restarted. So our county emergency management, along with Van Buren and Berrien, are working collaboratively to do everything that is necessary to get that done by the expected startup of October, potentially, so that's one thing. And then also, our inter-urban bus system is attempting to, I think they have a contract with an inter-local agreement with Van Buren County Board of Commissioners, to make a run for once or twice a week down here to South Haven Meyer from Sawtuck and from Fenville. So just to update you on that.
That would be great.
Yeah, and it's not done yet, they're working on that, they have to get, because it's across borders, they have to get authorization and contracts signed with county attorneys, so anyway. I will leave a few items here, so if you have any county-related items to talk about, talk about or deal with, our contact information's in there, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, it was great to meet you.
I am George E. Brighton, I live at 214 Superior Street. Madam Mayor, City Council, Madam City Manager, as someone who just turned 76, and who has visited and lived around South Haven for 40 years, I ask you to hear my message. My message focuses on your leadership role for the entire South Haven community. It is not to bring more tourists and more millions of dollars than all the rest of Southwest Michigan. Your role is to bring together everyone to make South Haven a better city. Two incidents in February showed how City Hall favors out-of-towners. The first concerns an out-of-towner contractor who parked a truck and a trailer on Superior Street for 24 hours each day from February 14th through the 19th at new construction at 220 Superior. On February 18th, 12 inches of snow fell overnight, when I called City Hall to see if this truck and trailer that were blocking snowplows from cleaning the street was illegal. The response was, maybe the contractor has heavy equipment needed to be parked overnight on the street. I called the police department to report this violation. A policeman arrived and told the workers the parked truck and trailer violated the law, the truck and trailer were removed. The second instance concerns blocking the sidewalk at 220 Superior with stacks of lumber and trusses with a fence and a sign saying, "No trespassing, keep out," and parking a giant front loader on the parkway between the sidewalk and street. I called City Hall to find out if these obstructions blocking the city's bobcat from plowing the snow are legal. I was told the contractor had received a permit for blocking the sidewalk. However, ordinance section 74-3 obstructing sidewalks says, "No person shall obstruct the full, clear, and free passage of the entire width of the sidewalk on any street with anything, except as provided for in a license agreement approved by city council. Any such license agreement or permit entered into by the city shall require an unobstructed area within a minimum of five feet be maintained as a clear path along the length of the sidewalk." And the ordinance further states, "All obstructions shall be removed from the sidewalk from November 15th to March 15th at all times during sidewalk snow removal." Clearly, a permit in the middle of February violates this ordinance, and therefore cannot be legal. Remember, it is not the fault of permanent residents who report violations of the law, it is the fault of those who violate the law. Thank you.
I came tonight to address comments made by our chairman of the planning commission on March 6th. Our chairman took upon himself to, to give us a history lesson, what he felt, how he interpreted the problem around the Elkenberg Park area, around our neighborhood, where we, many of us as African-Americans grew up and were raised in that area. I don't believe his comments represents the heart of our community, our diversity have been our strong point. But Chairman Stegman's comments have been viewed by many as wrong, as reckless, and outright, just not right at all. It was careless, and many of our neighbors, older neighbors have called me and was really upset about it. I want to also say that on March 6th, Chairman Stegman went as far as digging up several unfortunate incidents involving African-American men and women to justify his position, to support his, this young woman that used the word "zone." I believe he used that as a position to support tourism and STRs, and also to continue the stereotypes of our area. Chairman Stegman gave no reference to all the law-abiding citizens who contributed to the well-being of our cities, city, the professional athletes that Elkenberg Park produced, and the hard-working mothers and fathers that labored in the factories that were there at the time. Chairman Stegman's attempt to tell us our history was very disrespectful, and he stated, and I quote, "But historically, you would say, well, why was they referred to by that, by the four-letter word?" Unquote. He went as far as to say, as early as the 70s, after the Vietnam, we was just ending up, and I want to just say, end up here, that his comments was very, received very poorly by many of the residents. I'm going to personally ask on behalf of those other people that lived in that area, what he don't realize, that in the early six, late 60s, early 70s, the residents of that area used that word as a word of endearment. But because of all the labels and stereotypes, Bishop Cunningham, late Bishop Cunningham came back and had a proclamation done to have it viewed, to have that area viewed as the Pleasant View addition, which is on our history, records for the city of South Haven. So his history that he gave, his history lesson, was altogether wrong. And I ask that the mayor require a written, a written apology from Chairman Stegman. He named three incidents in our community, and unfortunately, it was wrong. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Blanca Hinojosa, and I'm here representing South Haven Pride. Good evening. I stand before you today with immense gratitude on behalf of the tire team of South Haven Pride 2025. I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the city of South Haven for approaching, for approving the incredible event, this incredible event. Your support is just not a decision. It is a statement that our community is one where love, diversity, and inclusion are celebrated and valued. Pride is more than just an event. It is a beacon of belonging. It is a day where families, friends, individuals from all walks of life come together to celebrate who they are freely and joyfully. And thanks to your approval, South Haven will once again be home to a vibrant, welcoming, and family-friendly celebration. Everyone is encouraged to be their authentic selves. On June 28th, Stanley Johnson Park will become once again transformed into a space bursting with life, energy, and connection. Attendees will enjoy the songs of a live DJ bringing soundtracks from cultures from around the world. They can celebrate the artistry and joy of our community, explore a diverse vendor fair, including everything from a nonprofit to handcrafted treasures. We will have family-friendly activities like craft, craft-making, face painting, interactive park games like Cornhole. The air will be filled with the smells of delicious food trucks servings up flavors that reflect the beautiful diversity of our community. And a night will end with an iconic drag show. This year's theme was chosen to be "Love Knows No Borders." We chose, was chosen to highlight the beauty
One minute.
...of trans across the cultures, colors, and backgrounds. We are committed to uplifting the queer, Latino, BIPOC, and allied communities, ensuring that everyone feels seen, heard, and embraced. Your approval to South Haven Pride 2025 is more than just permission to hold an event. It is a powerful endorsement to, of inclusion, acceptance, and the values that make our city a truly blessed, special place to be. It tells everyone LGBTQ plus person, every ally and every family member that live in South Haven, that this is a place where we all belong. So from the bottom of my heart, from the bottom of the team's heart, I want to thank you for recognizing the importance of the event. Thank you for standing with us, and thank you for helping us create a space where everyone can truly belong. We invite you to join us on June 28th at Stanley Johnson Park.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we're moving on to City Manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I did re, just as an update, we did receive the lifeguard report from US LA. I did share that out with the City Council today. We're looking at bringing that to council in April. I know that there was some, some information in there that I had reviewed by the team. We had a lot of people who read that report. I think it's a pretty lengthy report, so please read that. And we did have some updated responses put in that report. They had kind of mixed up the Shays' response time, but they've got that clarified, and that was sent out on, I got that late Friday. I did want to share some good news. One, I have made an offer to Chief Dennis Honholdt. He will, he has offered, we've offered, and he has accepted to be the next chief of police. His first day will be April 1st. In addition to that good news, we have hired two new patrol officers who are nearing their graduation from police academies, and they expect to start May 12th. We will release their off, their names after they finish pre-employment screening. So that's pretty good. We're pretty happy to get those two new officers. Also, as an update, job offers have been accepted for the 39 of the 46 seasonal positions that we have. Onboarding those staff are being done right now. We are still reviewing candidates for an open beach, for, I'm sorry, for beach enforcement. We still have a couple of open positions. And then lastly, this Wednesday, we will have our priority setting at Northside Marina. Once again, we'll be having Al Vandenberg come there. And I did send out the previous year's priorities meeting and the SWOT analysis. We can build on that. If we want to start all brand-new, it'll just take us a little bit more time. So if you want to kind of just add into what we had already, you can start from there. So that'll be 5:00 on March 19th, this Wednesday. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
I guess we should say one last thing. I want to say, I really want to give a heartfelt thank you to George, Mary, Dave, and Kelly. There was a lot of good work that was done this week, and without their efforts this week, or last week, we wouldn't be sitting here today with an adopted ordinance. So thank you very much for all your hard work. It is well-needed and well-deserved, so thank you very much.
Okay. Now, it is time for council comments.
I have a
Questions, room.
Couple of questions, yeah. First, thank you for putting in the Van Buren Conservation District letter. For the lifeguard proposal, can that be published so people can get it before an agenda packet issues? I know, I think residents are all anxious to view it.
It can be published, but I want them to understand that that's, nothing has been decided yet.
Correct.
So council has not made any decisions yet, so.
Correct. But I think that it, I think they would like to see what's been written.
Have corrections been made to that?
At least one item, yes.
Okay.
I think those were correct, done before we got them, right?
Yes, the one, the Shays' response time has been corrected.
May we share that with people if they ask us for it?
Absolutely.
So we can share it. Okay. For the litigation counsel, I think those proposals, responses were due on Friday. Will you be sharing those with us and setting up time to interview?
I'll have to see.
Well, so litigation, I mean, our charter has legal counsel responsible solely to City Council, and these enforcement legal counsel, you know, ensure that our codes are enforced with how we want. And I would request that the City Council be intimately involved in that process. Did you get more than one response?
We did get more than one response.
And do you have a concern with having us involved with the interview process?
Well, my concern is that I'm going on vacation starting this Friday. I'll be out next week. As to when those, when that process will occur, I've got only a few more days where I got to get some things out the door. So I'm not sure what all that process is looking like, knowing that I've got a couple of things that we're trying to get done. So how that all looks, I'm happy to review. I just, I know that I've got some timeframes and some deadlines that I've got to meet before I leave on Thursday. And then the prosecuting attorney really just kind of effectuates what you do.
Correct. But our charter gives us the authority to have input on that process. So do I have your confirmation that we will be involved in the selection process versus you simply coming to us with a contract with a name on it?
I'm not sure yet. I can tell you right now, I'm not sure if we're going to need a, like, an interview process like we did with the city attorney's office. I just haven't gotten that far.
Well, then, before anything is done, I, I move for the City Council to consider directing the City Manager to propose the process by which the litigation counsel will be selected. So.
I don't hear a second. The motion fails? We're moving on. Any other questions for Kate?
Yes, so just towards that end, again, the city charter gives us sole discretion on litigation counsel. And so I certainly hope that you have that involved. And I guess at a future meeting, I may just be coming forward with a request that we have a meeting with Jeff Sluggett to discuss our charter and who's responsible for what. For the priority setting, how many of us are able to make that?
All of us. Good question.
All of us.
Well?
I think all of us.
Joe, are you able?
I cannot make it.
Joe has told me he is not able to make it, no.
And is everybody else able to make it?
Yes. Can you make it?
What's the date?
Wednesday, day after tomorrow.
At 5:00?
I'll let you know.
Okay.
Because I'm concerned that if we don't have at least six of the seven of us, it's not as productive and efficient as we could. And I'm not, I'm not sure the process used last time was very efficient, so.
Would you like to move the date? Is that what you're saying? What are you saying?
Well, if, especially if both you and Joe cannot make it, I'm not sure Wednesday is the appropriate date.
So just as some background, we're using Al Vandenberg, and I reached out to him late January, maybe early February, to lock in a date. And this was one of the few dates that he was available. So that's kind of why we're locked in on the 19th. The longer we push that out, that kind of has impacts to our budget process. As you know, we have a number of budget workshops in April, and we have to then prepare for a public hearing in May. So the longer we push, pull that out, the longer it's going to take for our budgeting process. So we may be looking at special meetings and workshops in May to get our, our process done.
My bigger, bigger concern is that we don't have everyone there to have a, a fully vetted discussion of our priorities.
Yep.
And that it would not be an efficient use of our time or Al's time.
And I have sent out those priorities, and I've encouraged you all to write in with your priorities that we can put in part of the master list. And as you know, he puts them together, and then we all come here and we vote on them.
Okay. And then, so.
I mean, I'm just trying to be, I'm just trying to be mindful of the fact that we've done this before, where people can put their, their comments on paper, it can be part of the voting there, but we also have another ranking that occurs in a meeting here.
No, I understand that. And will there be other items listed for consideration for priorities from your staff added at the meeting?
I'm still working on that list, so I hope to get that out as soon as possible.
Because I would ask that that list be provided to us at least 24 hours so that we have time to digest it.
Doing my best.
Okay. And budget, so I know that you'll be coming to us for the budget, and I see Ross Stein here. So there was the article in the paper about the township with their extra income from the marijuana. And for South Haven PD, it's my understanding that we, the costs are not fully covered by what the township pays. And I appreciate that we provide them the benefit because we would have to be first to respond because we're the closest.
Right, they could, they could, if, if we wanted to terminate the relationship, and they give that money to the, to the county, they could do so, yes.
But out of camaraderie and trying to help each other's budgets meet budgets, I would ask that when you're coming to us with our budgets for, especially for police, that maybe you talk with Ross about ways that the township might be able to cover more of their budget. So that's it.
Any other questions for Kate?
Nope.
Okay. Councilperson comments? Letitia?
First off, I want to say thank you to everyone who came out tonight, and I wanted to really let Mary and George know how we really, really appreciate you guys' hard work to get us through the, this short-term rental ordinance, and I am so glad we are done. And I do have a question for Kate, but I'll leave that to the end. I really wasn't going to make a comment, but I'm going to make a comment about something Bishop Wilkins said. It is bothersome, and I am hoping that the mayor does address it because I think those nasty comments, when you do mudslinging, then it's going back and forth, and I don't think that, that's a healthy community. I don't, I don't think that's right, and I'm not even going to use the word, but everybody knows, when you start naming, calling people out in the community by name, who, and first of all, if I was five years old and we graduated together, he was five years old. And if I barely knew, I know he didn't know. So who's giving all this information to make all of this so negative? And all of this is all about short-term rental. So I really think, and I hope that Mr. Stegman apologizes for those negative remarks to the South Side because he does not know his history, and he doesn't know what he's talking about. And he offended some, my family's been in South Haven since the 40s, and they were hard-working people from the South. And no, they were not perfect, but they worked hard to raise their families, and that's offensive for him to say those type of things because people don't just, crimes weren't just committed on the South Side, they were committed on the North Side and all over South Haven. So we just have to be honest and be real and stop all this mudslinging because I think it's disrespectful. And when you talk about people's families, because there's people in here whose families were called out, and that wasn't right. Because there were some people who have served time who were innocent. So all I'm doing is asking that, Mayor, that you please address that because I think you would be offended if it was your relative, and I think we all would be offended if our relatives were called out like that, and you don't know your history and you're saying things that you should not be saying. And like I said, I know he doesn't know what he's talking about because I was five and he was five. So that someone in this community that's, had fed him all this information, and I think that is making, you're pushing, and I'm just going to say it, when you do things like that, all you're doing is pushing blacks against the whites, and I think that's wrong. So everyone is saying we're trying to have a healthy community. Let's have a healthy community. And I heard someone say something about diversity. That means everybody. That means everyone. Don't just say just what fits you. If you, you want diversity, then you got to value everyone's opinion and what everybody looks like and what everybody's doing. So we're saying that we're being loved, and we got to love everybody. I look out here and I see a lot of different things going on. Everyone wants to be included. No one likes to be on the outside, and no one likes to be picked on. So let's do better.
Thank you.
Those are my comments.
George.
No comments.
Joe?
I've been on City Council for seven and a half years, and seven and a half years I've struggled with short-term rental issue. I can't go shopping on Saturday without people coming up to me. I can't go to the senior center without people coming up to me, good, bad, indifferent their opinions. The part that I always love about this town is people care. We are not an apathetic group of people. So regardless of which side of it you're on, people do care, and they want to make the community better. So I appreciate that very much. I know it's been hard, and there's been a lot of compromising, and there's been some criticism of us up here on the City Council. I think it's actually our shining point right now. Through all of it, we got through this, and we came to a final amendment, final ordinance that will be better than we started with. And we did it by everybody working together up here, as painful as it was at times. I also want to talk about, and I'm not going to get into who said what on the Planning Commission, but I will say this, real simple. Leaders bring people together. They do not push them apart, and they sure and heck do not start to find faults in groups of people. That does nothing good, and it only is divisive. The last thing, since it ties right in with diversity, last year we had to make a decision about pride, and we supported it up here. And I walked it. I saw several City Council members. I saw our mayor, and there were no problems. Everyone came together, and it was a wonderful get-together of people in this town. And it says so much about our town that we can support each other and support people that are different than us. And then the last thing is Happy St. Patrick's Day for all those that are Irish or want to be Irish. Happy St. Patty's Day. And I even wore green tonight. My wife told me before I left for the airport this morning to get here so I could vote on short-term rentals, she made sure I wore green. So thanks, everyone, and thanks for everyone's support.
Thank you. Mary?
Yep. I want to recognize Shays' for their people who responded to the smoke in the condos, I think in, along Woodham, found a canister that probably would have ignited into a horrible fire as the person was leaving. So great work. Our community just has so much to offer. Yesterday, several people were just blown away with the musical talent of Connor Ostel, a South Haven Public High School graduate, making a positive note in the South Haven area with his performance at the area with his performance at the historic Scott Club yesterday. Shout out to the robotics team. Congratulations on their most prestigious award of first robotics, the IMPACT Award, and wish you luck in the competition in April. And the South Haven Public Schools History Club also knocked it out. So many, many of them are advancing to the state level. And this year's theme is rights and responsibilities. It's so appropriate at this point in time, along with the role models. And I hear the comments and concerns about the Planning Commission and that was very disappointing to have that as the ending comment from the chair. We've heard about the respect that teams, that our high schoolers are held to, the level of respect. The robotics team in their presentation talked about how you don't want to, you want to be friends with everyone because you never know when you're going to need their help. And just respect for everybody. And rights and responsibilities, there can't be anything more respectful than that. And one of the teams that I've been helping the most is doing Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And it's just been exhilarating to see them grow and better appreciate rights and responsibilities and appreciate what people went through to create rights for us. And so, you know, I urge members of this body and all-appointed boards to set examples of respect. Teach our students respect. We shouldn't be learning from them. They should be learning from us. And I encourage respectful speech at the podium before these bodies. And that has been lacking and I would expect the mayor to address it for the city resident appointed members on the boards, especially the chairman of the Planning Commission. That's all I have to say.
Wendy?
Okay. Yes. Thank you to George and Mary and everyone who was on the working group for the short-term rental ordinance. I know you guys put in a lot of hours and appreciate the time that you took. And I, I think we ended up with a really good meeting in the middle that hopefully will help move our town forward. And on that note, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the residents and short-term rental owners for their patience as we dealt with this and for being willing to give a little bit for the betterment of our town. I think, I hope that we can see some positive results from this. And I'm excited to attend Pride in June again. I brought my daughters last time and we had a good time. And I had a couple of things, but we've been here for a while, so I just wanted to ask Kate about, every now and then it pops up in conversation or in my mind about the community vision statement. I know a few people over the months have talked about it as well. And I'm just wondering if we could put that somewhere where people would see it, like somewhere in City Hall?
Sure.
Just for us to like see and reference and I feel like that would be kind of a nice thing to have. And I think that's going to be it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks to everyone that came and spoke tonight. Thanks to Mary and George and Kelly and Dave and Kate who worked so hard, six hours just last week on the short-term rental ordinance. Mayor had a good point about students setting a good example, but I can tell you from experience, they don't watch us. They're like Michigan Community College used to have a government class and they would get extra credit to come here and I'd sit and I'd watch them fall asleep. And then they'd ask me at school the next day, "What happened?" So then they could still get the extra credit. I would tell them, you know, I would get them caught up. But those are just my comments.
Thank you. Thanks to Mary and George. George, thanks for your leadership. We appreciate it. Thanks to all of you who put in countless hours. We had a winning weekend in South Haven. Xander Duncan, who lives in Ward 1, competed in the boys swim state finals this weekend at Eastern Michigan University. He placed 35th in the 50 freestyle and 23rd in the 100 butterfly. So great job, Xander. Listiak was packed this weekend for all three performances of the musical Chicago. The acting, singing, and dancing were phenomenal and our actors deserved every standing ovation that they received. If you've never been to a concert or a dramatic performance at Listiak, I urge you to watch your calendars for the spring concerts that are going to be coming up. So our program at South Haven Schools is phenomenal. And in fact, one of our former superintendents called South Haven Schools a mini interlocken. Richie Garcia spoke to Kwanis maybe a couple of weeks ago and he did a great job. So people were very impressed with what he had to say and they were filled with confidence about our programs. And then today, Michael Landis spoke to Kwanis. And I heard they had so many questions, you didn't have time to finish your talk. So that was great to hear. So thank you. And people are really impressed with our city staff, so that is great to hear. So I don't have any other comments. If there's no further business, we're adjourned.